Good evening and welcome to the July 5, 2022, meeting of the Manhattan City Commission. It is now six o'clock, and you know that's our new meeting time for all future meetings, legislative and work sessions. So after all these years, we have to change our inner clock. At this time, I'd like to have the city clerk call the roll.
Mayor Morse.
Present.
Commissioner Haddasal.
Present.
Commissioner Ready.
Present.
Commissioner Butler.
Present.
Commissioner Mata.
Present.
If you would please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, because this is the first meeting of the month, this is the time for general public comments. So if you've come this evening for that part of the meeting, would you please come forward and sign in? Just general comments about items that are not on the agenda tonight, please.
I've already signed in.
Pardon?
I've already signed in.
Oh, well, you're good. Are you Josh?
Yep.
Yep, Josh Runyon. Okay, Joshua?
Yep.
Runyon, okay.
I'm Josh Runyon, citizen. I've been here since I was three. My dad was a bulldog at Raleigh County Police Department for many years. My mom was a youth pastor at Seven Dollars and essentially did daycare. I've grown up, I'm just here to speak about Parks and Recreation and what it means to me. Recently just had a lunch sitting with a bunch of other citizens. There were thirty of us, give or take, at Rockin' K's at eleven o'clock, I think, on a Wednesday. So it just kind of blew my mind that I was able to get that many people there off of a quick whim, just to support Parks and Rec. Don't want to give you that presentation. I'd like to come back and present what I presented to all of them, just so you can see what I had brought up. Today, I want to talk about Tom. Tom bags groceries at Dylan's. When I was a kid, roughly my kids' age, Tom was on my baseball team. My dad coached my baseball team. We were pretty good. There were a lot of rules written about my dad as far as our coaching and just having fun and a lot of different things that through Parks and Rec throughout the years. I know Mike Buchanan invited us to go play travel ball when a local Manhattan team, because A.D. Mays, who's Parks and Rec product, coaches at North Texas now, played football at that school down the way where we're not going to say their name. Anyways, what I want to get to is essentially Tom has special needs, and a program like Parks and Rec really helps out all those students. They don't have the ability to go out and traveling. They're not going to be able to do stuff outside of Manhattan, and Parks and Rec is important for people exactly like Tom. I learned a lot from Tom at the time, and I know that everybody else on my team did. And there are a lot of other citizens that depend on a program like Parks and Rec. Real quick, I know the city had put some stuff out on high quality of life is kind of what we love to focus on. Parks and Rec does that, okay? On the leadership side, everything that we're going through really talks about the culture of the city. Parks and Rec is our culture, okay? I played baseball until I was a senior. I know that program went away. I'd like to see something back until eighth grade. The one number that stands out to me the most on the budget is there's a nine hundred and eighty-five thousand shortfall. It's pretty obvious. If you take the project, this is all projected off of twenty-one, I don't think anything else was out there. There's forty-one thousand users projected for the year twenty-one. I don't know, obviously with COVID, where it was at. If you just divided that nine eighty-five by that forty-one thousand, you'd get roughly another twenty-three dollars and forty-five cents per activity that everybody registered for. I think I register for probably five. I mean, an extra hundred and twenty-five, hundred and fifty dollars to be able to play Parks and Rec. I know the one thing that we don't do is dance, because all of my kids have done Parks and Rec. We all start that way. Then we kind of realize, okay, well, is this somewhere we need to elevate and go travel ball? Well, my son, I coached him in soccer. We elevated to soccer. I don't know enough about soccer, so Mike Sanchez coaches soccer, but I coach baseball. So we go to Hutcheson. We keep it very simple. My cost for baseball with uniforms and everything this year was only two hundred and fifty dollars. Very reasonable, especially when you think of other programs in town. But not everybody can afford that, but not just affording, it's sometimes about time. Scott Seeburn owns Rockin' K's, Mr. K's, MHK Trolley, all that stuff. He was talking about how important this is to him because of all the businesses he supplies for the city and people. He doesn't have that time to go to Kansas City or Topeka for travel sports. And I know there are lots of other options as far as getting Parks and Rec, like board, but a lot of that stuff's not set up. Citizens are not included in the process outside of just select board. And that's just where I'd like to be more vocal and just be maybe more helpful as far as what we can do as citizens. I know we have another meeting probably in the afternoon or late evening for those that obviously can't make an afternoon meeting for the presentation, but if you'd love to have me, I think I signed up for the twelfth. Hopefully, we're able to do that. So other than that, I appreciate your time and everything you guys do, and go Parks and Rec.
Thank you for coming.
Yep.
Welcome, Gary. You're becoming a regular.
Yeah. That's intentional. That's not accidental.
Okay.
My name is Gary Olz. I live at thirty-three oh eight Frontier Circle here in Manhattan. I'm here to talk to you about another quality of life issue that I've been here before, and that's the property tax valuation, ad valorem tax. I hold it for me for the purpose of those who can view this not very well, but it's a document that, as I understand it, sometime in the month of September, don't exactly know when, but you're going to receive a document if you're a taxpayer or parcel owner in the community that looks like this. It doesn't show very well on television, but basically it is a breakdown of any taxing entity of which you are a part of, whether that's a cemetery district or a city or a county or a school district or a township or whatever. The county clerk is going to send you this document. It's going to be about two months, thereabouts, ahead of your actual tax statement that you're used to getting and have gotten for years and years and years. So this is your first opportunity to see how much you as commissioners are going to charge in taxation, which, as I understand it, is a discussion tonight in terms of the percentage of increase. So my point in bringing this to your attention as citizens that are watching is that when you receive this, do not count, call the county clerk, do not call the appraiser. Call these commissioners, call the school district, call the county, because they're the ones that are determining these rates and this cost. So it's important that you know that, because from the appraisers I've talked to over the years is when the statement comes out in November, their phone rings off the wall, and they have nothing to do with taxation. They just set the value of your property. So when you get this, if you want an explanation of what's going on, and you happen to know one of the commissioners, give them a ring and have them explain it to you, what the increase is going to be. So I just want to point that out again, so people are aware, because this is the first year you're going to get the R and R or the revenue neutral rate. And it's my understanding that this board intends to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
That is on our agenda.
Right.
I mean, you're.
That's part of the discussion.
The question was, is that on our agenda? But you've just named it, so it is on our agenda tonight.
Is that, that's part of this evening's agenda.
So the general comments at the beginning.
I understand, but I'm talking about the R and R.
I am too.
So I'm just wanting to point out that this document, it's going to come to you. This is just a sample that the state gave to.
We know what you're talking about.
People, so that they know. But the citizens don't know, because they've never received it before. So I think it's important that everyone realize that when this document comes, that they've got to have a place to call, because they're going to have questions like they always do. So don't call the appraiser, don't call the county clerk, because the county clerk just sends it out. If you want an explanation, I guess you could call Ron's office, but he may not have enough staff to answer all the questions, from what I understand, in terms of the number of the call. But if you know the commissioners, give them a call and just ask for an explanation. Thank you for the work that you do. I know it's going to be a lively discussion tonight. Frankly, it's a difficult situation that you face because of the fact that you are going to exceed the R and R. It's a question of by how much. You're not going to use last year's tax, or mill levy, or not mill levy, revenue from property taxes. So that's going to be the discussion this evening. Best of luck.
You know, I think in the future I'll have to enforce the not on our agenda part, just because you kind of worked your way into it. All right. Does anyone else wish to speak to something that is not on our agenda this evening? If you do, please come forward. Seeing no one. I'll close the public comment period and move to commissioner comments. The next item, let's see. So I would, beginning at the far end, Commissioner Mata. You have nothing? Okay. Commissioner Butler. Commissioner Ready.
Yes, I just wanted to say I watched some of the fireworks last night. Very good. I think the community did a nice job the past four days. No more fireworks from now, I think, so we shouldn't be hearing anymore. But very, very nice, and I don't think there were, even though there was a lot of dry phelims out there, the rain and everything else must have helped to kind of dampen that. I did want to remind everyone, if your name has changed in the past year or your address has changed in the past year or since the last time you voted, make sure you check your voter registration and see if you're updated. And if you haven't registered to vote, please register to vote. The deadline is July twelfth. So I just wanted to remind everybody to make sure, just check. It just takes a few minutes online. Thank you.
Okay, no. I just, before I came here, I sat in on a Zoom meeting with Common Table, and they're the group that hosts an evening meal for low income or people who need, you know, sometimes just some social interaction every night of the week here. It's sponsored by local churches, and it is just a wonderful organization. So I'd encourage you to be supportive if you ever get the opportunity. I also am this, the city commission's representative to the Flint Hills Regional Council, and we have hired a new executive director. His name is Jerry Lonergan, and he is doing a wonderful job right, right out the door, right off the bat. And we have a new, the group for the regional council, regional, the region consists of seven counties in this area, and of course Potawatomi, Gary, Riley, and Wobunsee and several others are part of that. But we have a new five hundred thousand dollar grant to help identify contaminated sites and try to figure out how to bring them back into production so that they are part, you know, we have a site not far from here that's an old gas station, and nothing can be built on it. It's just dead land. And so that's the kind of, that's an example of the kind of thing we're working with. And we're going to be writing more, some proposals for funding, but we've been, we're a lot, in a really good financial situation right, this year, not so much last year. We kind of had a changeover in executive leadership, and we're really pleased with our new director. So with that, I will move, close the commissioner comments section and get back here, and move on to the consent agenda. So the items on the consent agenda, and I think there's usually an agenda at the door if you haven't had a chance to see them, are those of a routine and housekeeping nature or those items which have previously been reviewed by the city commission. A commissioner may request an item be moved for separate discussion and consideration immediately following the consent agenda or at a different point in the agenda if desired by the city commission. Does the commission have any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items? So we'll now receive, hearing no comments, seeing no comments. We will now receive public comment on any item on tonight's consent agenda from the public. Public comment will begin with people who signed up online, and no one did sign up, by the way. So if you have a comment, if you would come forward and state your name and your address for the record, and each speaker will have five minutes, and you can speak only once and must stop speaking when the timer sounds. Neither the commissioners nor the staff will answer questions or debate an issue. We will take your comments under advisement. If, if anyone wishes to come forward to speak about a consent agenda item, would you do that now? Seeing overwhelming enthusiasm. I will declare that the public comment period is now closed. Is there a motion from the commission, or do you have?
Mayor, move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Haddasal, a second by Commissioner Ready. And the city clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Morse.
Yes.
Commissioner Haddasal.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mata.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
And of course, next, this is not going to be a, could not be a long meeting. It may be a long meeting, but the next item is the general agenda. And the, will be, Rena Neal, the city finance director is here to talk. We will be considering a resolution number oh seven oh five two two dash A dash intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. So Rena, take it away.
One second, mayor, just trying to see what's going on with the sharing. Thank you kindly. Thank you. Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Tonight, we will discuss the revenue neutral rate. So after the city has received preliminary valuation information from the county and the budgets from Raleigh County Police Department and the Manhattan Public Library, we compile evaluation analysis, which we've shown a couple of times already this budget season, highlighting the mill levies needed to fulfill the budget requests. This is based on whether the city intends to capture full growth or not. Tonight, we will present information on that revenue neutral rate and proposed tax rate for two thousand and twenty-three. By July nineteenth of each year, the city is required to notify both county clerks of its intent to be revenue neutral. Revenue neutral is to finance collecting the same amount of property taxes as the prior year using the current year's total assessed valuation. The revenue neutral rate can be impacted by valuation growth or an increase in the mill levy. If there are increases to either of these two factors, the community is no longer revenue neutral. And so listed on the screen is just that definition, as well as what could potentially increase the valuation or the mill levy impacting that revenue neutral rate. This calculation was shown a couple of work sessions ago as well. So the taxes levied in two thousand and twenty-one was thirty-two million, forty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars, and our estimated valuation for both Raleigh and Potawatomi County is over six hundred and thirty-three point nine million dollars. Raleigh County has provided the revenue neutral rate of fifty point five four eight mils. And if we compare that to our current mill levy for two thousand and twenty-two, that is fifty-two point one four three mils. So that valuation is based on an increase of five point nine percent. In order to capture that growth in valuation, the city anticipates it will not be revenue neutral in two thousand and twenty-three. This is due to the mill levy increasing with RCPD, as well as the proposed decrease for the library and the city operations. We do have a slight increase in one of the funds for mill levy impact, and that is for our fire equipment reserve fund, and that is to make sure that we meet all of their budget requests for two thousand and twenty-three. This slide is just a representation of our two thousand and twenty-two mill levy for our outside city services and our city services compared to two different options that we will be presenting in terms of the valuation analysis, as well as the resolutions. But the first option is the flat mill levy, and then the second option is the capture the full growth. And so fifty-two point one four three mils is our mill levy for two thousand and twenty-two. Based on the request for RCPD, as well as the library, and then again to meet the needs of those city services, then those are the reflected mill levies. And that is a zero-mill increase for that first mill levy option. And then for the second mill levy option, to capture the full growth and all the property taxes, that mill levy impact is fifty-three point zero zero four mils for an increase of point eight six one mils. The mill levy impact is captured primarily in the outside city services with a slight increase in those down at the bottom for the city services. So compared to two thousand and twenty-two, here are the mill levies, the option one, impact, the option two, impact. As we continue to discuss the two thousand and twenty-three budget and look forward, we want to highlight the past recommendations and those items that continue to be a point of review as we talk to our financial advisor, bond counsel, as well as our bond rating agency. The city's mill levy fluctuates each year to offset any increases for the police department and the library. We rely heavily upon consumer and user-based revenues, which are inconsistent, unreliable, and non-sustainable. Property taxes are the most reliable and consistent revenue source to provide city services, and those are what are compared to our sister cities when we are issuing debt. When the revenues are not met, the city has to reduce, has had to reduce our levels of service and have had to utilize cash balances. We have shown in the previous work sessions our goal and strategy of getting to that GFOA recommended cash balance of ten million dollars within the general fund. We're currently at eight point five million dollars, and we continue to strive to meet that goal, but that is another target that our bond counsel, our bond rating agency, and our financial advisor looks at when we're budgeting and operating. Without an increase in reliable sources of revenue, we will continue to develop the two thousand and twenty-three budget based on what we have done in the past with the potential to reduce services, scale back, postpone, or possibly eliminate some operations or services. We are recommending a long-term approach to fund city operations as this annual report, annual approach results in trends and practices that are not sustainable. We have already presented information on our strategies for a vehicle and equipment replacement fund, as well as an IT fund. We also have prepared a true CIP program for two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-seven. We are developing a bond and interest fund strategy as well, and these are all recommended practices from GFOA, as well as our bond counsel and our bond rating agency and financial advisor. As we continue to own in our costs to operate and provide services, we must focus on reliable revenue sources to match these expenses. And again, property taxes are that reliable revenue source. That is what our outside experts have provided as that guide and that basis when comparing other municipalities. Included in your packet are two valuation analysis options and two resolutions for consideration tonight. If we look at the valuation analysis for the first option, we intend to capture one point eight three eight million or seventy-seven percent of the growth in property taxes of that two point three eight two million. So I'm going to share the valuation notices as well that we have provided in the packet for you to review as I continue the presentation. So this is the first valuation compared to that flat mill levy impact. And so capturing that one point eight three eight million dollars or seventy-seven percent of the total growth, which is two point three two, two point three eight two million. Most of this capture will go to meet the additional request for RCPD and the library for a total of one point seven four five million. The remaining ninety-two thousand will go towards city services. In this option, the mill levy will remain flat at fifty-two point one four three mils, with the city and library absorbing the increase for RCPD. And you can see the differences off to the right. For this option, the resolution highlights that we intend to exceed the revenue neutral rate and that we will set the public hearing on September sixth at six P.M. If this option is approved, this resolution will be provided to both county clerks following this meeting. We do have a second option as well. The second option. And this is fully capturing the growth. If we look at this analysis, we intend to fully capture the two point three eight two million dollars in property tax increase. RCPD and the library will still receive that one point seven four five million dollars or seventy-three percent of the growth. The remaining six hundred and thirty-seven thousand will go towards city services. To fully capture the growth in this option, the mill levy will increase by point eight six one mils to fifty-three point zero zero four mils. For this option, the resolution highlights that we intend to exceed the revenue neutral rate and will set the public hearing on September sixth at six o'clock P.M. And if this is approved, then this resolution will be applied to both, provided to both county clerks following this meeting. So in this option, there's the two thousand and twenty-two mill levies compared to the forecast of two thousand and twenty-three mill levies. The difference, the majority of that mill levy increase goes to RCPD. And then there's a decrease in the mill levies for library and the library employee benefit fund, and then the differences over off to the right for the city services are also included. Going to reshare the PowerPoint. So I just went over option one and option two of those resolutions and their respective valuation analysis. Our next steps, we are to forward the resolution, whichever one is decided of those two options, to the county clerks on or before July nineteenth of the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. July twelfth, we have a work session with our chamber in the CVV and additional budget discussion. August ninth, work session, we'll, we will come before you with our enterprise funds and our utilities rates budget discussion. August twenty-fifth, we need to publish the notice of tax rate public hearing and the two thousand and twenty-three city budget public hearing. The county will provide a more detailed notice to property owners in that timeframe. And September sixth, we will hold those two public hearings. September twentieth, we'll have second reading of the ordinances related to those two public hearings and those ordinances. And then on October first, we will publish the two thousand and twenty-three tax rate, two thousand and twenty-three city budget ordinance and certified to the county clerks. It's important to note that the information provided tonight is just a maximum of, to publish in the newspaper, as well as to the public. There will be other opportunities to discuss the tax rate in September, as well as the tax rate could potentially change in the fall after all of the valuation information is finalized. Again, September sixth is the important date to notice. Public hearing on the tax rate, mill levy can't increase, can't increase from the published rate, so whatever we publish, that is our final, but it can be reduced. And then on the public hearing side for the two thousand and twenty-three budget, that budget can't increase from the published amount, but it can decrease. So those are our max thresholds for the tax rate in the budget. They can decrease, but they cannot increase. That concludes my presentation. We stand for questions.
Commissioners, before Rena starts, thank you Rena, I appreciate that. From my perspective, we would recommend that you adopt the higher rate at this time. So one of the issues regarding the revenue neutral rate has been that it's kind of moved forward this date of publishing, even though they moved our, gave us another month to really finalize the budget in September, which we might realize additional two months of revenue before you actually have to pass that budget and know what trends are going into the, to at least this year's history. One of the things that the legislature required you to do was set that proposed mill levy maximum, which you would typically do for the public hearing in September later. So they didn't really give you another month to, they give it to you to finalize. But basically requiring us to establish what that maximum mill levy rate would be, which would be something we would typically do after we debated the budget for the most part. So we have to produce that a little bit earlier. So I, it just gives you the flexibility. Again, you can always go down. If we had two, two months of additional declining sales tax, we could certainly talk about what additional mill levy support there might be. But once you set that maximum rate, you can't, you can't go back to property taxes for increasing them as that source. I would also just point out that we, historically, we haven't issued a delinquency rate in the property taxes in either, in any of the funds. We did have about a two percent delinquency rate in property taxes last year. So in addition to all of the dollar amounts that were projected to be funded by the RCPD, we had to send them an additional one hundred and eighty thousand out of our general fund to make them whole, because there wasn't enough property taxes in the mill levy to support them. So those situations, that's not something we know about, but it's another reason that we would recommend that you could, in the future, have a delinquency rate that helps protect some of our coffers. So with that, we'd happy to answer any questions you might have.
So would that mean you, we could attempt to build the delinquency rate into what the RCPD part?
Yes, so on the.
Rather than having the city have to, I mean, but what happens at the county? Does the county have to, does it have a delinquency? It doesn't, it doesn't.
They have the similar ability.
Rules, does it?
It, it does.
Yeah.
I mean, they can also issue a delinquency, right? So, so the, it was a two percent delinquency.
Yeah.
But twenty percent of their, whatever their delinquency is. So, you know, generally, it's, if you've had some experience with delinquencies, it's a, it's a good idea to, to include a delinquency rate. And you can see it in the second line item there. In the past, we, over some periods of time, we have had that delinquency rate in there so that it does account for it. Now, if you don't make us absorb that, I mean, that's the other issue. We're already absorbing it, plus if you don't, if you have the delinquency, that's a little bit more stomaching because we don't have to worry about there being a potential check, additional check we have to send them at the end of, in December to make them whole. So that's just something I wanted to point out.
So that, there's no delinquency rate figured into that RCPD levy?
Okay, that's correct.
Okay.
In any of our funds.
Alright, so that line up there where it says five hundred and forty-four thousand four twenty, that's, that's the difference between the two options on the table tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so sales tax is up eight hundred and seventy thousand over budgeted estimates right now, is that correct? I think I, I got it right here, but I closed it, I think. Okay, so there's, I know that there will be potentially a higher cost of everything between now and the end of the year, fuel and stuff like that. And I know that this tree cleanup thing has been a much bigger deal than we ever figured it was going to be. If, but with inflation running away like it is, that makes sales tax go higher because people are paying sales tax on higher prices for their stuff. My point is, is that it, I would hope that we, yeah, if, if, if we don't even collect any more sales tax than budgeted the rest of the year, we should still have, we have eight hundred thousand dollars. I, I was thinking if we got to come up with five hundred and forty-four thousand, I think Vern Hendricks has talked to everybody here, and I think he could probably come up with a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand. So now let's say a hundred and fifty thousand, now we're down to four hundred thousand we got to come up with. Surely there'd be a couple hundred thousand left of sales tax, so we only need to come up with two hundred thousand more. And I don't know if, it, it just bugs me that all of the ARPA money has sort of gone in, into things that we want and need. But I would sure hope that we could wrestle a hundred thousand bucks back out of one of those, either the CIP or one of those other three or four places that you've stashed the, the ARPA money in order to help come up with that extra five hundred and forty-four thousand. I, I just think there's, we could piece together three or four things to, to make that difference without it being property tax based. That's, that's my initial thinking. Tell me how that is a terrible idea.
I'll take a stab at that. So I don't disagree there, you know, things look good right now, you know, for six months, that's, that's April revenue for June. So that was kind of before things started to get crazy price-wise, just starting from, from some of those higher cost of gas, and gas was a lot cheaper in April than it is today. So will those trends continue? We're halfway through the year, so we'll have to make that budget decision with two more reports essentially. And, and whether it continues or not, whether we'll continue, will folks continue to spend even, even, you know, cutting off for different aspects. It's, it's a crystal ball, you know, it's one of those things that makes it difficult to estimate on a month-to-month basis, whether we're going to have that revenue or not. And so if, if it doesn't, then we'll either have to cut something or, or, or take out of reserves. So certainly that's, that's an option. I guess I would just, you could still make that decision down the road versus not being able to do it at all. Or, or even add a delinquency.
You, you did.
Or you could do anything in between.
Yeah, well, you, you did mention on the radio this morning, or before, when we were off the air maybe, that so far, we think we got two more good months of sales tax based on, on what the state says. So we're now down to just potentially, our part would be, we're now, there's only really four months that are potentially iffy. And, and it's still four months, and it could totally crap out. But if the economy craps out and sales tax plummets, then there's no reason we ought to be raising property taxes if everybody's already in the tank because inflation has driven everybody into a recession or whatever the case might be. So, but yeah, I understand that, and I, I might be able to be talked into going with the higher rate just for another couple of months, but I, I wouldn't vote for it, the higher rate, unless something drastically changes. And then, like I said earlier, if it's something drastically changes, we probably don't need to be raising taxes on everybody who's already in bad shape. Go ahead.
Yes, yeah, I, I sort of agree, Mark, that, you know, I've been looking at the sales tax rates. We got six months of them going up. Can't call it a trend if you do statistics until you get the seventh one. When that happens, then, then you can make some estimates, and generally that tends to pan out. But, but the other thing, i- if I recall earlier budget meeting, didn't we have two million dollars, two point three million in these ARPA funds that hadn't been committed?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, but, but to me, that's the answer. What, you know, instead of having a community meeting, say, how would you like to spend this money? It, it's clear to me that, you know, people want parks and rec fixed, they want the roads fixed, and we want to cover RCPD costs. So why don't we just take a million of that, put it in the RCPD fund that covers delinquency? You can take three hundred thousand out of there for this year. If there's any delinquency, you take it out of there, and then what's left, you just bleed it off over the next three or four years so that we don't have to argue about RCPD. Then take the rest of it and split it between the parks and rec and public works and be done with it. And, and then we can have a flat mill levy, and it shouldn't be any pain. That, that's my assessment.
And everybody benefits.
Doesn't that, does it, it has to be COVID? Isn't there that piece to it?
Yeah, the, the ten million was for general revenue loss that, that we took that exemption. The remaining two point six is supposed to comply with ARPA rules. Whether that would apply, we'd have to do some research on.
But my understanding is, I think Linda pointed this out, Mayor Morris, that, you know, RCPD didn't get anything. They didn't get any of this money. And so it seems to me that we should be able to make that case. I mean, that's the challenge. I mean, I understand it's got to go against there, but there's got to be a way to make that case. We had swimming pools closed for, you know, almost two years.
Yeah, we, we can make the case of our revenue loss, and but we gave RCPD their full budget. I know. They didn't lose any revenue.
But, but there's got to be some way to, to play that. I mean, since, since they got nothing, we had to eat it, I get it. So why can't we pay ourselves back?
I, I agree. I think, and I've read through a lot of those rules too. I think we can make this thing work. We may have to be creative in certain ways. But to have a mill levy increase with having those funds, you know, I just can't vote for that. I think we have plenty of resources to take care of, of everything this year, and that's the way I'd like to approach it.
Yeah, I think if we're, I mean, this is still about just publishing this, so we're not making any budget decisions. I think we can still work out how we're going to use the ARPA funds, the rules, because I don't know all the rules myself on, on the two point six and what that entails. We discussed even spreading it out for four or five years with social services. We talked about RCPD right now. I don't know all of the requirements for the, the, that type of money. But I do agree with Mark on several of these issues. I think for publishing, because we're still going to discuss transient guest tax, the chamber asks, and there's a bunch of other ones that she just listed off for the next couple of months. So I think those discussions still need to have, we need to still have those discussions. And if sales taxes are going up, and we're increasing our sales tax revenue, I would think the same is true for our transient guest tax revenue. So I don't know if that's an option to use for any of these. We've used those funds in the past to see if we could use them for the rec centers, for example, if that's where the events are taking place. I think those are discussions I would like to have, but tonight we're going to be voting on one of these options and discuss the details in future meetings is what I'm assuming, right?
Thank you. I do think, I, I just prefer to be optimistic. And today, there's an announcement from the state that the sales tax revenue is higher than even anticipated, and they have, and, and we know that the internet sales tax or the compensatory use tax is up here and across the state. We have ARPA money, we have growth here, and not every Kansas community has the kind of growth. And we have to keep that growth going so that we can look forward to the future. But the economy overall is improving, or the sales taxes wouldn't be going up. We know that property taxes assessments are up and it, inflation is present. But who didn't know that we wouldn't have inflation after two years of COVID? I mean, I knew that, and I'm not an economist. We knew that there would be issues. You know, we don't want a, a lot more inflation, we don't want a recession, but none of us have a crystal ball either. And so I'm interested in a little bit more of a gamble, and I would prefer the higher, publishing the higher rate. I also, with regard to RCPD, you know, there are communities around the country that are cutting police budgets, and I don't want to inadvertently cut our police budget. I think they do a good job, and I don't think they're one of the problem police departments around the country. And so I want to continue to, that we have to fund ourselves. I agree, Ron. I mean, my goodness, we have to keep moving. But my, I'm willing to cut an infrastructure project if we have to for one mill in order to do some of these things that need to be done here in the community. So we all have different, different opinions on, in different items. And so it's not something we want to do, that's for sure. But we have to, our city has to survive financially. And we've been, I, I'm really happy, happy that we did the, the, we implemented the new salary study and that we found a way to fund that incrementally. And so those kinds of things, after the three years we've been through, are important. And I want to have confidence, I want our employees to have confidence in, in our city. And so I would support that also.
Yeah, I just want to say the reason, you know, I'm, I'm still for the flat mill levy is because inflation rates around eight percent, and this increases, you know, the budget by about seven, which will, which will absorb part of that. But if we publish the higher rate, we're, we're basically telling the population out there that our philosophy is to spend more, and they keep sending emails saying spend less. So, so I think the only way that, you know, you, you get the budget under control is you send the message right now that the cap is that flat mill levy and no increase, otherwise staff is going to figure out how to keep adding money to it. I mean, that's how I see it. You know, you got to draw the line now and say, no, quit, quit trying to add stuff to it. The limit is a flat mill levy, which is still an increase because it exceeds the revenue neutral rate.
Be brief, I agree with that. And with the ARPA funds that we have, there's, there's really no reason that we can't cover any contingencies that come up between now and the final publishing, so I'm still for that flat mill levy.
The, the whole idea of, of staying revenue neutral is completely impossible when RCPD needs one point seven million. If, if we were going to try to do revenue neutral, we'd have to cut one point seven million out of city operations to, to make that. So any, any real discussion that staying revenue neutral is, is a total waste of time because there's no way that that can happen, right? Everybody shake their head up and down.
Well, there are several factors, but RCPD is not the only.
Well, no, but, but their, their budget went up one point seven million, you can't argue that.
But even without them, we would have to publish this. Because just the assessments at the county, our, our rate is up higher than last year. That would require us to, to publish for the revenue neutral rate.
Right. Unless we cut the mill levy like three or something. So, yeah, but, so, yeah, I just, okay, so this, so that discussion of, of, of not going over the revenue neutral rate, that discussion has been decided earlier in the evening based on, or, or weeks ago, months ago, probably. So it's just a matter of, of which, which, which one at this point. So let's see if anybody, Gary wants to weigh in on this.
Yeah, he's going to say it again, but now he's going to say it under the topic that it needed to be. Okay, Rena, thank you. I don't know.
Thank you.
Unless you have, anyone has questions for Rena?
I just want to be sure the mill levy equals what, about six hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred dollars, somewhere in there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Want to be sure I had that number right?
Thanks. I, I guess the only thing I would just say is that, and I certainly understand and appreciate everything you're saying, but essentially, you know, the police department, which I don't disagree, we need, we need a strong police department, no, no question about it. And, and if they were a part of the city, you know, I'd be dealing with those particular issues as well. But, you know, we're, we're clearly absorbing that entire amount except for ninety-two thousand if you support that lower level, so.
No, unless we come up, like with the ARPA funds or some of the stuff we were talking about, Vern, there's other ways we could attack it and still keep you whole.
We can for this year.
Yes.
I mean, but it's, it's, again, it gets back to sustainable approaches for the long term. We're not, we're losing ground in sustainable.
Well, if our sales tax comes in, maybe we're gaining ground.
I mean, we, we're obviously utilizing some of our cash balances to help implement and sustain our payroll increases. And we can continue to do that for a while until we're back in the same boat. So I just want, want to make that clear. It's just keeping an opportunity, but I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so just, so based on the lower mill levy proposal, if, if things go according to plan, well, does that still, if, if everything else stays, stays according to projections, are you still looking at the eight and a half million dollar cash balance? Does the budget for two thousand twenty-three end up eight and a half million left over in, in general cash balance at the end of the year?
We have not finished the two thousand twenty-three budget. We just got done with the meeting today, so we're still working through the two thousand twenty-three budget.
So that, that proposal doesn't necessarily keep that at the eight and a half million?
We, correct, sir. We continue monthly to review our revenues and our expenses. So while our revenues in terms of sales tax may be increasing, then you also have to look at our expenses as well. And so that's where we have to balance that out in terms of that. And so that's where we have to balance that out in terms of that cash balance line.
So the other thing that happens is, in this whole process, is that the mill levy that we're stipulating here is still an estimate. The final mill levy doesn't come about till November, October?
October, November.
So, and that's based on actuals and everything coming in. So last year, and Rena, you can help me with my numbers.
53.335 is what we set as our rate.
When we passed the budget. And the mill levy came in at?
52.143.
So we lost a lot of ground.
Yes.
So again, that's why you have some delinquency accounts, even, even from an estimate to a final, we lost, we lost revenue. And so I guess I would just say, you know, the, the least that we could do is do something in a delinquency fund so that we don't, not just lose that value, but we, if we have less property taxes, we don't have to make additional cuts and transfers to make that happen. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you for the staff report.
You're welcome.
Does that conclude the staff report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and at this point, we would have an opportunity for open public comment on the topic of the revenue neutral publication and requirements that we have.
Thank you. I'm, I'm gonna, please, stop me if I'm out of line, as you pointed out earlier.
You just have five minutes.
I don't want to talk about the revenue neutral.
Well, wait a minute, I just want to interrupt for just a second. If he used the five minutes to talk on this topic at the beginning, does he get an additional five minutes to talk on this topic again?
Ordinarily not, but-
So technically, we should have stopped him in the first part.
But I didn't know he was, until the end, he was going to talk about the revenue neutral rate.
I'm actually not going to talk about R and R.
Subtract.
I, I just want to plant a seed here, and I'm not sure everybody realizes this that's listening, is if you live in the city of Manhattan or you own a business in the city of Manhattan, you're not paying 18 million dollars. You're paying 25 million dollars because the 20% is also being paid by county assessment or taxation. So if, when you live in town, all of you live in town, you're paying 100% of RCPD's bill. 25 million dollars is their bill. There's a fundamental problem in that you all are elected representatives, and you already know that your job is to represent the people and listen. But the RCP, RCPD board, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, is made up of four elected officials, and I believe three appointed officials. I hope I got that right. So you don't have-
Three elected officials and four civilians.
What about Barry?
This time, he's elected, that's true.
Right, but, so there's, so there's four?
Yeah.
Right, okay. So there's four elected officials and three non-elected. If you don't like their budget, you only have four people that represent you, because if you don't like what they do on RCPD board, they're not up for reelection.
The thinking for that flips every few years, whether elected or appointed or civilians.
Yeah, I understand that.
We're not going to solve that today.
I'm just pointing it out to the citizens as you discuss the budget with regards to 25 million dollars of RCPD's budget, which is, in my opinion, is one taxpayer, way over the top, way over the top, way over the top. But we don't have any basis of comparison. We don't know what it costs for Johnson County Police and all those individual police departments or Wichita or pick a city, Lawrence. So tough decision. Appreciate the time.
Okay. You came in at two minutes, thank you. Sorry to be honoring. Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Is anyone else here to speak in the public comment about the, the revenue neutral rate that we're considering, part of the budget that we're considering this evening? Seeing no one, I will close the public comments section. And I have new instructions here, so I have to make my way through. Well, the, I guess we're back to the commission discussion time, and we would need to have a motion, I guess. If you're through with discussion, if you want to talk some more, then let's proceed to do that. This is important.
Just, just a point of clarification. We talked, Katie, about changing it to where we would make a motion and then have a discussion like every other organization in the world tends to do with their motions. But I see we're reverting back to the old way of discussing then motion. Which, what, how did we leave that during the debate a month or two ago?
Sure, and you're, so I have the new policy here. Let me pull it up so I tell you exactly. So on the general agenda item, what you have, you've been through the presentation, your questions, public comment. At this point, you can have discussion with the staff clarification or commission discussion that's intended to help you formulate a motion. Then you have a motion and you can have discussion on the motion. So you can have discussion prior to the motion, but it's intended to kind of clarify comments from the public or any questions that you have, and you need to formulate it.
But you can ask the staff questions after their presentation, so it's not all commission discussion. It's, it's dynamic, yep. So we could have a motion or we can continue to discuss.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion unless someone-
I move, we approve resolution number 070522-B regarding the governing body's intent to levy a 2023 property tax exceeding the revenue neutral rate with a proposal maximum mill levy of 52.143 mills and setting a public hearing related thereto on September 6, 2022 at 6:00 PM at City Hall, 1101 Points Avenue, Manhattan, Kansas.
I'll second.
And the actual mill levy you propose in your motion is?
The flat.
Which is 52.143, okay. We have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Okay. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Mayor Morris?
No.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Hold on. Hold on. Two. Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Motion carries, four to one.
Not much left here.
I want to clarify one thing, sorry about that.
Sure.
The motion's been made. So when, when she calls the roll, does it start with you all the time then?
No, I don't know.
This time it started with-
Yeah, it was a little different. It's all right.
It started with, so I just wanted to know what the-
Rookie mistake, nobody knows.
Yeah, I just wanted to know.
It was laid out in my, my next year.
I honestly don't know.
I don't know either, that's why I'm asking.
And I don't care. I, I just, I'm ready to vote whenever I'm supposed to.
Right, when she calls her name, okay.
Okay, all right. Chelsea, thank you for calling. And I think that we're ready for, we need a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I get past all the pages to get there.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there further discussion? City clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Yes. All right. The end.